I'm gonna fall asleep.
That's why they have the music. No one wants to watch that anymore, so just go to bed.
If I make it up past ten, it's something.
And I always say if I'm in bed before midnight, it's a good day.
I can't stay up late. I can't either. If I didn't have to get up in the morning by five.
I don't get up at five, but I would say somewhere along the line I would catch up with me and I'll be more than five and a half, six hours asleep. When I said my dad gave me one bad thing, passed it on, that was a horrible sleep. My brother and I go, and then my daughter.
Alright, so it's still live?
It doesn't look live.
Doesn't look live.
How long do we can see each other?
Okay, at seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order to have the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, you have your own?
Yeah.
Okay, we have our own. Item C, adopt the agenda. The only additional item I have on my list is the additional list of bills that Jackie sent out this afternoon. Any other changes?
I don't believe so.
Okay. There's no other changes on, I guess, one.
Was the audit?
Yep.
Yeah, but that was an update. That was updated on here? Yes.
Yeah, I sent out a new.
A new agenda is actually over there, I forgot to include that in the packets that were printed. So right by the clipboard, there should be a jet copies of agendas for you guys, sorry about that. I'm gonna pass one to Scott too.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Yeah, it was emailed out, but not in the paper copies, sorry about that.
Under the agenda.
So that should be fine.
Yep, this is the final meeting.
Twenty?
Nope, nineteen.
It is the nineteen and twenty-one?
Because of the elective, the elected board.
Okay.
Yep.
Good enough for me. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve with those changes when you're ready.
Some moved.
Second. Motion second to adopt the agenda with the additional items listed, all in favor to say aye. Public input on non-agenda items, anybody here to speak?
Hopefully.
Oh, okay. We'll move on to item E, approval of minutes of past meetings. Included in the packet, any questions, comments there? Now, take a motion when you're ready.
Take a motion to approve the last minutes of the past meeting.
Second.
Motion at second to approve the minutes of the past meetings, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Item F, approval of financial items, financial reports, summary list of bills plus the additional and business official report. Jackie?
I don't have anything significant to report unless you have specific questions on the financials that are listed in the board packet. I did send out, as he said, an additional list of bills this afternoon, just a few extras. If there are any specific questions on the payees or amounts.
Do we have rolling flags in the gym now? Did I see that right?
We have a rolling, we will have a rolling flag in the gym. That is a Booster Club discussion.
Alright.
And purchase.
To like unroll before the.
Yeah, so it'll drop from the ceiling.
Yeah.
For the anthem.
Sure.
Yep, so our hope is to install a break.
Alright.
So the Booster Club's been collecting donations and spend order and then reverse install. Knock on wood, supply chain doesn't bite us.
Want to comment briefly on the strong cash, cash position? Three million.
I would say.
Some big bills getting ready to come out of that?
Um, I would say it's probably a little bit of just your cash reserve levy and, you know, things otherwise I don't see any significant bills. The only thing that I'd probably say we haven't paid would be a couple of open enrollment payments to other districts, but I think that still shouldn't bring it down that much, so.
Right.
I guess it's just a cash reserve levy and increase in property taxes and a little bit of everything, so I would do a little more investigating.
Can we keep an eye on that one?
Yeah.
See what's best.
Sure.
Other questions or comments for Jackie? Take a motion when you're ready. Those items.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of bills.
Second. Motion and second to approve the financial items.
Yes, also financial.
Plus the additional list of bills, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Item G, old business. And it's old because of the retiring board. So item number one, consider approval of the twenty, 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 twenty-one external audit and financial statements by Grant Williams.
How we had a conference between Dave Janz, Carrie Davis, Brent Jorth, and myself and our auditor on November eighth. She reviewed the audit in, I would say, semi-deaf. And we were allowed to ask questions and she talked a little bit about the single audit, which is because we received more than $750,000 in federal funds. So that's what's called a single audit. That was obviously because of our S R dollars as well as the free and reduced, not free and reduced, the free meal program for all students. And so between general fund dollars and those hot lunch dollars, it did qualify us for what's called a single audit. So it just involves a little bit more testing and reporting. And then I did put that in as a secondary page, just to let you know that that has been submitted to the Federal Clearing House already. And then you received the draft of financial statements, there really wasn't a lot of change. I think there was a clerical typo or something like that that she had to change, otherwise it was what she sent. I do have the hard copies now in case anyone would need one or ask for it. No significant items of note and no issues of non-compliance. Obviously the same two comments that we always get, which is segregation of duties and that she prepares our financial statements.
Really no surprises at all during the audit.
It's recommended that you approve it. I put out a news release and then send it back to her and she'll submit it to the State of Iowa Auditor's Office for filing.
Entertain a motion to approve that, if there's more discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty, twenty-one external audit by Grant Williams.
Second.
Motion at second to approve this year's audit, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Item two, review the results of November second, twenty twenty-one election.
So after we'd sent the packet on Friday, we received the abstract of votes for the election. And they matched the unofficial results that everybody was privy to the day after the election. So Scott Postma and Carrie Davis, Scott receiving three hundred and ninety-five votes, Carrie receiving three hundred and sixteen votes, elected for school board. And then the revenue purpose statement passed with three hundred and eleven votes for, ninety-two votes against, so seventy-seven percent to renew that revenue purpose statement. And then the voted pebble was also extended to sixty-five, four and one forty-two again, so sixty-five percent. And both of those just needed a simple majority, so. Revenue purpose statement's extended until twenty fifty and voted pebble for ten more years, so twenty thirty-two, I believe. So about twenty thirty-one, we'll look at that again for reauthorization, whether we want to keep it the same or back it off or increase it. Sure.
Leave me for a moment, just a simple motion.
I'm not gonna, it's just a review.
Just kind of report.
Just so that the public is aware that we received an official report of the voters.
Consider those, the election results reviewed. Item number three, consider resignation of Director Witt.
Yep. Uh, well, as I've had a discussion with pretty much all of you, I'm gonna be, I have a different position in my role at the ministry, require a little bit more time. And so in part of that, something needed to get squeezed out a little bit and this is kind of where it fell to. So I appreciate the time that I was able to get to know everybody and enjoy working on the board. And yeah, I think the district's in great hands and great situation, so. I appreciate the time that I was able to serve, but I need to be home a little bit more and that's kind of how it's going. So.
Well.
I officially resign. Official. Hopefully someone will bring some humor to the meetings once I'm gone, so.
Well, on behalf of the board and all the staff, Joel, I want to thank you for your service and your dedication to making our learning environment what it is for our kids today and wish you nothing but the best in your new role. Continued success. Looking forward to running into you at all the ballgames and events going forward, so thanks.
Thank you.
We came onto the board together six years ago.
Yeah, I know. It was a lot more fanfare at that first meeting than there is this one.
It's a good thing.
That was one of the rare public input times. I was just thinking like, we hardly ever have anyone public input, but that first meeting, there was public input. And we were not part of the board yet, the old board was retiring then. But that was, that was something that I remember.
Would you like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion that I would resign.
Motion at second to accept the resignation of Director Witt, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried.
We're good. Yep.
See Scott?
Around.
Yeah. Thanks for having me. Bob, thank you.
Is John? John?
Carrie, we're doing it.
Right. Item H, adjourn the retiring board.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion at second to adjourn the retiring board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. This is President Perot.
I'll call the meeting to order of our new board at seven fifteen P M. With the following members present, the rule stays the same minus Joel Witt. And let's see here, we're gonna do an oath of office for our new board members. So Carrie Davis, Scott Postma, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Director at Large for the Central Line Community School District as now or hereafter required by law? If so, answer yes, I will do so.
Yes, I will do so.
Yes, I will do so.
I hereby certify and verify that I have administered the oath of office as required by Iowa Code Section two seventy-seven point twenty-eight to Carrie Davis and Scott Postma on the fifteenth day of November twenty twenty-one in my capacity as the Secretary for the Board of Directors of the Central Line Community School District. Okay. We need to adopt the agenda, if I could have a motion to adopt the agenda as it's slated for you.
So moved.
Second.
Perfect, I have a first and a second to adopt the agenda, Carrie four zero. And now I'll ask for nominations for the election of President of the Board.
I'll nominate Andy Coob for President.
Second. Okay, we have a nomination and a second for Andy Coob for President. And oath of office, if there are no other objections or no other nominations, nominations will cease. Mr. Coob, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of President for the Central Line Community School District as now or hereafter required by law? If so, answer yes, I will do so.
Yes, I will do so.
Uh, the oath of office is administered as required by Iowa Code Section two seventy-seven point twenty-eight on the fifteenth day of November twenty twenty-one in my capacity as Secretary for the Board of Directors of the Central Line Community School District. The meeting is yours.
Okay, thank you. This time I'll entertain nominations for the election of the Vice President of the Board.
I'll nominate David Janz.
Second. Okay, we have a nomination for Mr. Janz. And hearing, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll cast a unanimous ballot for Mr. Janz.
And the oath of office, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President for the Central Line Community School District as now or hereafter required by law? If so, answer yes, I will do so.
Yes, I will do so.
I hereby verify that I administer the oath of office as required by Iowa Code Section two seventy-seven point twenty-eight on the fifteenth day of November twenty twenty-one in my capacity as Secretary for the Board of Directors of the Central Line Community School District.
Okay. Thank you for that. Move on to item G, appointments and committee assignments. So as we go through these, the one thing we need to keep in mind is that now I have a vacancy where we want to make sure that that person gets assigned to a few different slates of committees, if you will, and also give them some time to get their feet wet and up to speed. Then once that person's up to speed, whatever that timeframe is, we can see what their abilities are and where their expertise lies and see where they want to fit in. So I've had the chance to speak with each of you individually on a potential option, so I think just to get the discussion started, if there's any, I'll just read down the slate. Is that okay? Okay. Number one, buildings, grounds, and transportation, Davis and Postma. Number two, budget, Davis and Janz. And with having Carrie on both, that will give us liaison between the two to keep an eye on the numbers, if you will. Number three, personnel, Coob and Janz. Number four, policy, Coob and vacancy, which I don't believe the policy committee has met in.
Two years.
At least two years.
Yep.
A lot of policymaking anymore is reviewed. Item number five, sharing committee, Coob and Postma. Item number six, SIAC, that would be Janz and vacancy. Number seven, Lion County Assessors Board, would be the vacancy. And number eight, Central Line Foundation Board, would be Davis. Are there any objections to that slate discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve that slate when you're ready. So moved.
Second.
Motion at second to, for the appointments and committee assignments as described, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Item H, administrative reports, discussion items. Item number one, recognition and congratulations to student, staff, and community, Mr. Jorth.
Yeah, so I provided everybody with a summary of our student, staff recognition and community thank yous as well. First two have to do with our fine arts, so kind of the last weekend in October, we had our fall musical. We had over fifty students in grades five through twelve participate with those performances on Thursday, Saturday, and Sunday. Special thanks to Rochelle Ebel and Ian Langholt for directing all their time and hard work and creativity to put that production together. Fun to see so many kids on stage and hopefully those fifth graders stick through it for the next seven years, so. In addition, this, this weekend, or actually I used to say Thursday, we start with Opus, which is like the middle school all-state concert. So I've listed the students that have qualified for that ranging from sixth grade through eighth grade and then our all-state. Got three individuals from the high school, Van Hardson, Anamort, Cheese, and Matthew Langholt that qualified. So they'll be down for Friday, basically an all-day rehearsal for presentation or concert on Saturday night, so. Unfortunately, the Opus concert's not televised, but the all-state choir is televised, if you, you can find it on PBS, so. In addition, that first bullet point was many of those same Opus students were also recognized for the Northwest Iowa Junior High Honor Choir. That was on Tuesday, November eighth, so similar, they spent the whole day down in La Marre's rehearsing and then had a performance that evening. So congratulations to the fine arts kids and programs. Thanks again to Mrs. Ebel and Mrs. Langholt for all their work. Cross-country team finished their season the day after our last board meeting was the conference track, or conference cross-country meet. And then a week and a half later was the state qualifying meet with the state meet. Actually, the same Saturday as the musical on the twenty-eighth, or excuse me, on the thirtieth. So the boys and girls team finished fourth at the conference meet, fifth at the state qualifying meet, and then Mary Schrever and Afton Schlumbum qualified for the girls to run a state track or a state cross-country, so we congratulate them. And then Lane Henrichs finished, placed individually at the state qualifying meet and finished fifty-fifth at the state meet. So congratulations to those three individuals. In addition, we want to congratulate Claire Kramer and Brooklyn Kroll for being named Academic All Conference in cross-country and thank Coach Verbeek for her time throughout the season. Included the volleyball team here as well. They finished sixth overall in the conference with a four and five record, eleven and eighteen overall. I think the statistic that Coach Shah gave me was thirteen of those eighteen losses were to ranked volleyball teams. So there were three teams that we played throughout the course of the season that qualified for the state tournament. So one of the tougher, tougher records or tougher schedules in all of Class Two A. So we want to congratulate them on their season. And then as you can see there, the JV finished seven and six and the freshmen were fourteen and five. And then the individuals for all-conference recognition, Reagan Vanoy, Dion Janzma, Kaylee Davis, and Michaela Floyd. So congratulations to them and thanks to Coach Shah, Coach Wyler, and Coach Pop. Tonight, the football team's having their end-of-year banquet. But in addition, we want to recognize and congratulate them on their seven-and-four season, district runner-up, state quarterfinal success. And then as you can see there, I think there's a total of what, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen? Fifteen members of diversity that were recognized as all-district. And then as, I'm just gonna pull out three, Cooper Spees recognized as the special teams M V P of the entire district, Lyle Moore as the defensive lineman M V P, and then Zach Lutmer as the offensive M V P. So we took half of the kind of M V P honors in the entire district. So congratulations, not only to those three guys, but everybody that was recognized. And as you can see, we've had, we had five academic first team, or excuse me, six academic first team all-district. So congratulations to them and Coach Even and his staff for all their time, not only this fall, but really year-round in preparation for their success. And then Mr. Pletzky wanted me to thank Steve Herman and H and S Building Supply, or Home Building, for donating lumber for the creation of our Lego League tables. We just received all of the Lego League equipment, so we're putting out a flyer now, just starting to promote that amongst our fifth and sixth graders and really kind of targeting the after-Christmas timeframe to start the Lego League and this first year building towards the soup and pie supper for kind of our public performance, so to speak. And then a year from now, having a competition team, so to speak, so that in December, January, wherever, we can get our closest kind of regional meet, much like the F T C and the robotics that we have for middle school and junior high, there's only one of those for Lego League. So this first year will be a lot of learning for not only Mr. P, but the students. And then next year, trying to get involved with the competition. But that takes not only Legos, but a competition board and we want to thank Steve Herman for donating that and Grant Angel and his students for constructing that. So looking forward to that program, getting off the ground. Anything else you want to add, Mr. Harmon?
On the recording, mean?
Uh, just on any recognition or?
No, no.
Okay, thank you for that. Any additional communications?
Nope.
Nothing. Alright. Item three, student and staff presentation. Jeff Jager, school liaison officer, welcome.
Yes.
If you just want to sit right there, that's totally fine, you bet.
Sounds good. Alright. Evening, everyone. You come to share just a little bit about, a little bit kind of what I've been seeing this year, but also this year for Jessica Harmon and for Kate Gerber, they are at the Councilor State Convention, right?
Yep.
In Des Moines. So share a little bit with them, just kind of our numbers, some of the stuff we've been seeing this year, some of the things we've been doing and maybe some stuff kind of going forward a little bit. So I'll start with their stuff here, what they, what they gave me here, I can go over it pretty quick. And my stuff isn't too long either. But, so this, this first part will be from, from Kate. Kate has seen like, has seen right around a hundred students so far this year. Some of the stuff that she's been dealing with, that she's been seeing in the elementary age, has been anxiousness, a lot of working on coping skills, problem-solving skills, conflict, conflict resolutions, home and family circumstances, need for positive role male, role models, self-harm, and some self-image and confidence. That's been the stuff that she's been working on. She's been very busy down there, she also does a lot of in-class stuff, and it's charming, you can help me out if I'm missing anything, does a lot of in-class stuff, small group stuff, lunch, kind of lunch groups, different things like that. She's been working hard down there, doing a good job. And Jessica, so this would be seven, twelve. She's seen, also seen a hundred, a hundred and two students she's, she's put down and some of the stuff that she's been dealing with, man. some of the stuff that she's been dealing with, man, failing courses, early graduation guidance, testing, college application, ACTs, college visit stuff. And then kind of some more of the counseling parts, some friendship issues, social media, a lot of anxiety, a lot of different anxiety stuff, stress, anger management, some depression, kind of the same thing with the self-harm thoughts, home situation, grief, and low self-esteem stuff. But that is kind of what I do. So for me, if I see a kid four times or more a month, and I kind of write them down as on my, I don't know if you want to say a list, but on what I report to the state, to the juvenile court. So halfway through November, my list is at sixty-five kids. Last year, my total was seventy-one.
You've seen four times or more?
A month, yes. So every month, that's usually what I, you know, I'll have kids pop in and having a bad moment, I'm not going to, you know, write that down or whatever. Last year, total I had seventy-one, I think. So halfway through November, I'm up to sixty-five. Lot of stuff I'm seeing is kind of the same. I have a little bit different role, you know, obviously with juvenile court, different things like that. We don't have a lot of issues with juvenile court at this point with Central Island. But some of the stuff I'm seeing is I've seen more of the suicidal thoughts, more of the self-harm stuff. That was some great stuff. Dropouts and the homeschooling stuff, been working with kids and with families with that, some substance abuse, just regular abuse, the school behavior, I deal with, I'd help out with that, social peer issues, anger management, a lot of anxiety that's going on right now, working on a lot of coping skills, decision-making skills, had some stuff with some family passing away, family relationships, attendance, truantancy, probation of law, law violations, and mental health issues. It's kind of a lot of stuff that I've been dealing with a lot. Working, working talk with parents just about on a daily basis too, which I do with, now not all sixty-five, that's, I don't do that, but but with with as many as I can. I try to stay in contact with parents, and they stay in contact with me too. Our numbers have been growing, obviously, this 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 last year. And it's the need, obviously, there is a need. And another thing is, I think the kids are more willing to come in and talk now, you know. Hopefully, Kate and Jessica and I have a very open-door policy, and I think the kids know that, and they're willing to come in and talk more, which is awesome, which is great, which we we appreciate that, but obviously keeps us keeps us very busy. Some of the referral sources that we've been using around town, around the area, Seasons Center, Lisa Rockhill, I've been working with her a lot, Seasons Center, Creative Living Center, Juvenile Court, obviously I deal with them a lot, Atlas, area churches rely on them a lot. Been working with the area Behavioral in Sioux Falls, and also our hospital, Alvera here, a lot of DHS, the sheriff's station, I've worked with, Line County Sheriff's, county attorney, been working with them a lot. So there's some of our options around this area that we've been we've been meeting with. We've also had meetings, Mr. George, myself, Mrs. Harmon, and Mr. England met with Westline and George Liderac, their staff, did a conference call, just kind of to see what they're seeing, share some ideas, share some concerns, and if we're just kind of making sure we catch, just doing everything that we need. We had a meeting with county attorney about truantancy and just overall behaviors, different things like that. We had a meeting with, went to the, at the hospital, Line County Mental Health Meeting, did that a couple weeks ago, and then we had a meeting, I don't know, maybe about a month ago also, with Lisa, an AKA representative, and then I believe the other guy was from Sioux Rivers Behavioral.
Yep.
I think we all met with them too. Now, a lot of that's we're just trying to, it seems like we've been very, you know, I don't want to say very, but we've been kind of reactive, and we've been been trying to fix, which which is good, you know, we're working hard to try to fix stuff, also want to try to be more proactive. So that's what some of these meetings have been, is trying to figure out what's other people doing, are we missing anything? The Central Island, I'll guarantee you guys that, it's been, it's everywhere. But but yeah, you know, it's been, we've been busy this year, and again, I'll say that kids are more willing to come in, which is great. And we get some, our kids are great, you know, we got great kids at Central Island. We just want to make sure we continue to service them the best way that we can. So and also, our staff has been outstanding. We've got really, really good staff here that work their tails off to service our kids, and that makes my job, and Jessica and Kate's, and all our jobs a lot easier, our staff is very willing to work with our kids and do that. So but yeah, that's just a few of the things that we've been saying, and obviously, we just always want to be thinking ahead, know that we'll be proactive for our kids, make sure we'll be, their needs, and service them the best way possible. So any questions for me, anything?
One of the things that you mentioned that I think all three of you have seen, I mentioned at least, was anxiety. Is are there some common themes there that kids are having that was anxiety?
Every day's different. Every day's, every day's, you know, read off like, what, twenty different things, and to say like, one thing's worse than the other. It's not, you know, like, we see more stuff, you know, kind of, yeah, it really depends on the day, but a lot of pressure on kids, you know, there's a lot.
What types of things are, is causing kids anxiety?
Oh, school, grades, expectations, sports, you know, I mean, everything, peers, relationships, future, you know, everything, everything like that. It's, you know, our kids handle it very well, it's just good they like just coming in, I think, and blowing some steam off, but also getting some advice and ways to deal with it, you know, and our kids deal with it appropriately. You know, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of bad ways to do it too, and you're coming in and finding some advice or support from adults is a very, very good way to do it. So maybe we've been seeing more of that because kids have been able to share that more with us. So that's been been really good. It's just been, it's been tough, wasn't it? I think maybe Jessica sent this out, to Simon, that like, these seniors' last normal year they had was when they were freshmen, you know, because sophomore year, they had COVID. Last year was, nothing was normal about last year. So this, I mean, it's been a while. So, you know, you think, think of that, you know, so just anxiety, coping with that, all of us, you know, it's tough on all of us, you know? I mean, it's, but but no, we work well together here at school and the staff and everybody does a great job, and our kids are great kids, this isn't just here and say that we got, you know, all this stuff going on. But it's good to be aware of some of the stuff that are some struggles and kind of what we're seeing.
Do you feel like you have all the resources available to you that you need to?
A hundred percent. Well, we do, I feel like all the resources we go and talk with were very, but they're struggling too, you know, funding for different things, yes, there's not much funding right now anywhere for around the state or anything like that. We're provided with with all, you know, with all the resources, it's just some of our resources aren't just, not able to use them all right now. I guess, am I saying that in the right way? I guess, you know, like?
Yeah, I would say the number one, the biggest challenge, the volume of students that Jessica and Kate and Jeff are seeing, you know, a hundred kids, K through six, or a hundred kids, seven through twelve, is twenty percent in each elementary and the secondary. So that's more than it's been before, and that's testament to the relationships that our teachers have first and foremost with our kids and are recognizing, hey, you probably need to talk to a counselor, or you need to talk to Mr. Jager about this. And then with those increased numbers for our counselors and Jeff, their time is really scheduled. And so the ability for a kid just to drop in is becoming narrower and narrower, because so many kids have either an individual kind of counseling session, or maybe a group session with one of those counselors. So that's where we're starting to feel that stress. And so these guys can't make enough time in their day to see every kid that wants to talk to them. And I know Jeff and Jessica, every forty minutes at passing periods, it's very common for a student just to stop in and say hi and see how things are going. For Jeff, it's, they're picking up a piece of candy, you know? But that stop-in leads to a conversation maybe later in the day when the kid has a study hall, or at lunch when he's out helping supervise, and those numbers have went up over time. The biggest challenge that I see for us is the kids at the top of the spectrum, where we have to refer to professional counseling, whether it's the school-based counseling that we have set up through Creative Living, or even after-hours, Jeff's going to give phone calls because we've got a student at the ER, or kids in crisis at home, and they don't know where else to turn to. And so Jeff, a lot of times, is going over to their house on a Sunday evening, spending multiple hours, or we get a phone call from the sheriff's department because they're dealing with the family, and they've got a relationship with Jeff or Jessica, and they're the ones that are kind of the link. You want to talk a little bit about some of the juvenile mental health services that are kind of closing or have went away over the course of the last few years?
In the last, what's the, the one in Sioux City, I can't remember the name, I think that had like twenty-four beds that shut down. Forest Ridge in Estroville has been, that's been going forever. I mean, I I started doing stuff in like, two thousand one, two thousand two, working juveniles in Sioux Falls, and it was up and running, and then that is currently shutting down here. The S Center in Magnolia is shutting down. We're losing probably sixty, seventy beds just in Northwest Iowa. So the closest place if a kid needs placement is Fort Dodge, and that's a behavioral placement, that's not a mental health placement. And the odds of getting in are small. Mrs. Doctor and I was assisting a young, a student a while back that was asking for help, and we got eight facilities in Iowa.
Got eighteen facilities total?
Yes. And we went from, we went around the whole state, Sioux City Council left, circled around Iowa City, came back Mason City.
Sioux Falls.
Sioux Falls, there was nothing, nothing for these kids. So that's the reality of what it is, and it's, it's, it's just, kids are hurting right now. So, I mean, we left frustrated, but then what do we do? You know, we got to try to still help the kid and try to still service the kid here at school, the best that we can. But that's, that's what we're facing with right now. The places are shutting down, and issues are, I don't know if they're rising, but they're, maybe kids are just more willing to ask for help now, which is awesome. It's pretty frustrating when somebody comes and asks us for help, and we have to say, but I don't know, we've got nothing for you. Is he going to want to come ask for help again? Or not?
And so then what our options are, you know, especially if we start to get to the kind of upper end of the mental health and the self-harm, really our only option is to try to get that student to Alvera or Sanford to the emergency room. And so then through their, through the emergency room, a lot of times it's telehealth, because neither one of our facilities in town has a therapist on-site every day. And so where we have a kind of a long-term relationship with a student, we a lot of times see that these problems are coming, even the referral process through your family care physician could be two, three months. And so, again, that's why their numbers maybe are going up, and we're having these conversations, but it's just difficult to get the support that a student or a family needs for the mental health concerns that their kids are having. So for us, at the secondary level, you know, we've been having conversations that second semester, we're going to be more targeted with our flex time, and there's going to be more kind of whole-group mental health, kind of hopefully strategies to address the anxiety, to address the concerns that the counselors have been seeing. Mrs. Gerber at the elementary, like Jeff alluded to, already has, is on the specials rotation, is doing a lot of the Zones of Regulation lessons with kids so that they understand the emotions that they're feeling and what's an appropriate response when I get those. But it's the same type of, has to be all of us, it just can't be the counselors and Jeff that are responding for kids when they're being, they're feeling anxious, because those anxious feelings ultimately present themselves with inappropriate behaviors. And so that's where kids get referred to the principal's office, but a lot of times it's not because they want to act out, it's because it's an accumulation of a lot of underlying mental health problems.
You mentioned that some of the students that want to see one of our counselors, they can't get in that day, essentially. How do the students react when you tell them that? Hey bud, I can't see until tomorrow.
Most of the time, well, we'll work hard to get them, you know, to get them somehow. There's times where they'll sit outside by the door or whatever, wait, or they'll come back a little bit later. Our kids are pretty dang good. They'll, they accept it, and they understand, and they'll come back the next day. They're, we got, we got good kids that are, that know, you know, they're, they got enough respect for us and for the school that they will be able to come back. If it's an emergency, we make time for them. You know, we're able to know if it's something that's, does he just need to sit and vent a little bit, or is it something that is escalated to where he needs our attention right at this moment? And we'll give him, we'll make sure that safety and, or meeting that need first and foremost.
Well, thanks, Jeff, for coming and kind of giving everybody an update on our mental health challenges, and something, again, we'll continue to try to partner with our, you know, local resources. But I know something that the board, it's been on the board's mind, especially because of the pandemic and trying to get back to a sense of normalcy.
Yeah, absolutely. All right.
Move on to principal reports. Steve, it looks like you handed out something here?
I did, I just wanted to report. And that's a big thing that our, we get to begin November and into October, is we want to be able to talk to those parents, not only about academics, but how things are going. And so I just wanted to report to show you that the high percentage of parents that showed up, and we talked to five percent, you're talking, usually one family that doesn't show up. We reach out, the schedule program that we use is very popular, very successful, because parents can go in, choose their time, their day, they can go in and make their own changes as they need to. So that just shows that, you know, when we brought that in last year, what a difference that makes instead of us trying to schedule for them. Lisa Rockhill, Line County Services, was at both nights to make sure that, again, resources were there for parents. That's the biggest thing we wanted to do, is that communication with those parents, let them know that, you know, we're going to do our best, and that we are there for their students, and if there's things we can work on, let's do it together, you know, to spiral off what Jeff was saying, we really work on, you know, kids knowing that they have a chance to take a break, to step out of the room and come back fresh, and so that they're not in it alone, because if you don't, if you stop doing that, that's when we get busier, because then they're going to find a way to to get out of that room. So, you know, really high things, and all we do with this is we set up, with the elementary and middle, or the preschool through six, we set up the report cards, everyone, after conferences were done, we wanted to make sure that was a focal point. And then, of course, we're reaching out to those families who didn't show up. We have conferences yet today, so those teachers are really trying to talk to all those parents to make sure they know what's going on, and just keep that communication going and saying, hey, if there's something coming up, let us know, you know, because there's, we are, we're still feeling the effects of what we've done for the last eighteen months, and it's just coming out now, so. Yeah, really high, I'm really proud of my teachers, four hundred and thirty-three conferences, which is really good. We try to accommodate every family situation, or split situation, and, you know, it's good to see that that the community responds well to us, so.
I can make one comment on, I know Jason's not here, but on the high school conferences. So this was my first time with my daughter this year, and as much as I'd like to say that I know everybody in the school, I don't. And there are some people in the community that have kids, that have not had kids come through the high school for the first time.
Yep.
And they're going to know less people than I do. So I was wondering if maybe we could have just the teachers put their nameplates or sign with their names, so we know who they are?
Yep.
Think that'd help ease some of the anxiety of walking into that room?
Yeah.
Not quite sure I know who that is.
Right. Yep.
Suggestion.
I can follow up, for sure.
Okay, superintendent report, Mr. George, item A, facility assessment update.
Yeah, so page twenty-five of your packet has just kind of a Yeah, so page 25 of your packet has just kind of a very brief overview and then timeline of future meetings. Last Tuesday, Carrie Scott and I, along with Jackie and Steve Bresky, met with two architects from FEH, talked about a lot of different projects. These were kind of the top nine at the time. And I don't necessarily have them in any particular order. But I think on our initial proposal, we might have had like five of these projects listed specifically. And so our first conversation was just trying to identify those projects. And then what the architects will do between now and our next meeting roughly for that first full week in December is try to put some drawings together, research some kind of ballpark numbers. And then we'll kind of go through and talk a little bit more specifically about the scope of those projects at our next meeting. And then they'll fine tune that and we'll meet sometime again in February with ultimately a presentation from FEH to the board by our March meeting. If we're able to move faster, maybe a month earlier, maybe February. But just kind of see how things go with the holidays. Carrie, Scott, anything you want to add to what we talked about? Jackie?
I thought it was a really, really good informative discussion. I thought the commandant was very, very well informed and presented everything in a very easy to understand format.
I feel like we made a good choice with the, with FEH as the firm, so.
I feel like they'll give us ideas and what will work, what won't work and.
Yeah, I would say that for sure.
It's not just our ideas. They're, they're giving their input also, which I appreciate.
Yeah, even if it's, that might not work. You know, they were willing to give both sides.
And then helping us kind of identify all, you know, all of our funding trips. We kind of walk through, you know, the vote in PEPF has been extended, revenue purpose statement for save. So between those two things, yes, we're generating about a million dollars each year. But we know we've got buses to buy, roofs to maintain, technology to purchase. So we might be generating that much money, but it's really not that much when it comes to what we can do in any one year for projects. And so, you know, we might have to save and then do a project, save and then do another big project. And if we're able to identify any of these as maybe some smaller projects and just start kind of checking them off our list. So, like I said, just a good conversation, good thing for us to kind of get started.
Item B, the OSHA ETS emergency temporary standard on vaccination. Before we get into that, Mr. Jorth, I'll just sort of, for the board knows, I did ask Brent to contact our board-appointed attorney, Randy Longmister, see if he could get here tonight to not only tell us about how this court process works with the stays and the process to get to the Supreme Court, that kind of thing, but also give us some guidance as far as do we do nothing? Do we take a measured approach and plan accordingly for what to do there? Brent did have a chance to speak with Randy on the phone, so, Mr. Jorth, I'll turn it over to you.
That's the, kind of the, the other packet I put at your table. In talking to Randy and talking to lawyers from ISB today, and then also receiving the sample policies that are included in that packet. After I'd sent the email to staff and Jackie had sent out the board agenda, we received those policies, number one, from ISB. And then even later that night, about 5:30, the Fifth Circuit affirmed their stay. And then over the weekend, OSHA basically stated that they've suspended all activities related to the implementation and enforcement of the ETS pending further litigation. So what does that mean? Tomorrow, the Chief Justice Roberts is supposed to appoint a multi-state lottery, basically selecting different judges from different circuit courts from across the country that will ultimately hear arguments that will basically have a ruling for the entire country. So it won't directly go to the Supreme Court, but this multi-state lottery will hear it. And then depending upon that decision from that circuit court, it's likely to get to the Supreme Court, appealed by whoever doesn't have the favorable ruling. And so that's kind of the process. Again, talking to Randy, talking to ISB, you know, they recommended kind of taking a measured approach. So that's why I wanted to get these sample policies out in front of you guys to kind of review. But waiting until at least that multi-state lottery hearing has concluded to even consider adopting them. So really, we're going, again, my recommendation is much like theirs, is familiarize yourself with the policies. We might need to have a special meeting in the future to consider those policies. But at this point, let's just let the litigation kind of play itself out and see ultimately where it lands.
I think it's good to get the information in front of people so they understand what potentially could occur if it is, if it does move forward. So they'll know what the requirements will be and prepare themselves for that as they choose. But yeah, at this point, nothing that, that OSHA is mandating or something that any law is mandating at this point, nothing that we're going to mandate because of that.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure everybody was on the same page. Meet with staff tomorrow after school, kind of explain that same process, answer any questions that people have. You know, it's, there's a chance that, you know, that, that multi-court lottery might come back and say, you know, OSHA is well within their authority to impose this standard. And those dates of December 4th, 6th, and then January 4th, we better be ready to implement by that.
Those dates may not get pushed back.
Might not get pushed back. So, and then they could be ruled that they don't even apply and we don't have to adopt any policies. So that's where I think it's just prudent to, to kind of review these. And then any action that we need to take, we can do at some point in the future.
Yeah. And I think you hit the nail on the head that, you know, our effort here with staff and in particular your email from Friday morning was an effort in full transparency. We're not trying to hide anything. The board's not trying to hide anything. Mr. Jorth isn't trying to hide anything. If you look at the details of the quote unquote mandate out there now, regardless of how you feel about it, in theory, if someone chooses that they want to get vaccinated and they want to take the Moderna vaccine and they're currently unvaccinated, they'd have to start that process on December 7th. So that's where we wanted to get the information in front of everybody so that, okay, this is kind of what the board's dealing with. We're completely open and honest about everything here. So I certainly support those efforts, for sure.
And so this guidance that's in this packet that's given to us is from the IASB?
Yep.
That's what came out on Friday.
You know, and the language that ISB used in their messages, you know, these are going to be mandatory policies if indeed the, the court cases, you know, the OSHA standards declare constitutional. And we've got over 55 mandatory policies that we're required to have anyways. Now, we can, you know, customize them a little bit, but for the most part, these are written by attorneys. We're going to kind of move forward with them the way that they're presented. And then ultimately, it's our local decision on the enforcement process.
So do we know how many other businesses in our community here in Rock Rapids are affected? I know our firm, EGR Engineering is, the school is. Do we have others that are above 100?
The county, Lang County is, and then AOP is as well.
Of course, your hospitals.
And then Aveira and Sanford, you know, I know.
You can't separate by location, so they just get pulled in?
Exactly. Yep. So about five, six employers in town that I'm aware of.
I don't know if it would affect like a US bank if they can separate by location or not, or other banks. So, you know, I don't know if that affects Premier Bank and Frontier Bank and, okay. So that would be another, that I would assume it would affect.
Frontier may have that many employees.
I don't know between their two balls and other locations. But US Bank, obviously, if you can't separate by location, would be affected.
Likely will be.
Anything else on that?
Do we know how many, because they're obviously not concerned with privacy or anything. Do we know how many of our employees are unvaccinated?
At this point, I don't. You know, my best guess is somewhere between two-thirds and 75%.
Are vaccinated or unvaccinated?
That are. So it leaves about a quarter to a third unvaccinated would be my best guess. You know, the only thing that I'm basing that on is last kind of February, March, when it first became available, you know, about 80 individuals said that they wanted that first dose inside up through public health. We don't know, I don't know the names of those individuals. I don't know of those that said that they were interested actually followed through and ended up down at public health. But we haven't collected any vaccination records of our staff to this point.
Move on to the updated ESER III plan.
Yes. So if you recall in August, really on the back page, page 28, we had, Jackie and I had presented our initial plan for our use of ESER funds based, again, on our first quarterly submission. The num, the total dollar number has stayed the same, but our actuals specifically for summer school and after school has resulted in us kind of amending that budget and moving some of those dollars around. You know, we budgeted, again, about $60,000 for science curriculum. Well, it came in just a little bit over that. In addition, we added some English language arts curriculum materials as well. So I'll just kind of keep bringing this back in front of everybody when we have to submit that quarterly between now and September of 2023. So, again, we're, we're not expecting any major changes, but just as the actuals come in, I just want to try to do as, again, as transparent as possible with everybody.
I have to submit this to the state when I actually request reimbursement, so.
Any questions on that? All right. On to item number six. Any additional reports from board committees or board members? Any items of interest? Okay. Move on to new business. Item one, consider board meeting procedures.
So I think we've got the lavender trifold brochure. Basically have updated that with this year's information. We'll have to kind of update it again once we appoint a new board member here in the next 30 days. But really, the content remains the same. Just kind of lays out how the meeting functions and really the CHINA command for any complaints that community members might have and trying to address those at the lowest level possible prior to coming in, airing those grievances at the, at the board table.
If there's no questions or discussion on that, I'll entertain a motion to approve that item. Second, motion and second to approve the board meeting procedures as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item two, consider school board vacancy application.
So again, I included the, the policy 202.4 with Joel's resignation in the retiring board. But as it says there, we have 30 days as a board, or you have 30 days to fill that position. And so we're going to talk a little bit about our, our calendar of events here. But that would mean by December 15th would be the 30th day. So that's two days after what would be our regularly scheduled meeting in December. So when this has happened in the past, the board used a similar type of application. So Jackie and I and Amanda kind of took a look at that. And really, the only change is question five. We had a similar type of question, but we just wanted to really put it forward in front of any prospective community member that wants to serve what the board has been talking about as far as goals. And so that question specifically says, you know, which of the following goals do you feel you would need to commit your time to learn more about? So the question four was about what do they really have as leadership experience? What can they bring to the board? Maybe question five is where do they need to maybe dig in themselves to learn a little bit more about how the board functions and the priorities of the board? And then six is, is really an open-ended question about their interest and their desires to serve. So anybody have any feedback on that application?
One of the items I've thought about is should we consider putting a deadline on this, just so that we don't receive three applications the day of our board meeting that we plan to appoint someone?
Yep, and that's what he's got.
So I don't, I didn't have a date on that. But I would say, you know, we typically put out our board packet the Friday before, you know, and so if we use Thursday, that, before that Friday of the publishing of the packet, then we can get the applications to you for review prior to that meeting, unless you want more time than just the weekend before the next meeting. So my recommendation would be like Thursday, the 8th?
The 9th.
Or 9th, by 4 o'clock, by the kind of end of business here at school. If you want to move it up, so you guys would have a little bit more time to maybe review that. We could go second a week ahead, or we could do the Monday of. Really, whatever you guys feel like you need in terms of reviewing any of the applications that we receive.
I had just jotted down Tuesday, the 7th at 5 o'clock. But I open other suggestions there.
I think that makes sense. It would be nice to have a more of just weekend.
And I would just.
Time we have a package.
Just because our other staff leaves at 4, I would say by 4.
Good.
It just makes the door a little bit more challenging sometimes. People will stand up there, not be helped for fear to talk.
You okay with that?
Right. So that second line, mail, email or drop, I'll add, you know, deliver to by Tuesday, December 7th.
Our board meeting will be that Monday?
Either that Monday or a, a date after, so the 13th or whatever we determine. That's what we need to determine.
It's on the list. We'll get back there.
Do we want to move our meeting up because there's a concert that night? There's the Christmas concert that night.
That's what I was kind of wondering about because you have all have, I have, it others in that.
Yep.
And then, and that's maybe going to be a little, a little work session after.
Correct.
That one.
Correct. Yep. Couple of that one.
And there's probably others in that. I don't know.
Yeah.
Do you have?
No.
High school winter concert.
Yes.
Want to?
You've got it.
Guess you do have a.
Seven grand.
Just want you to know, you do have a child in that concert.
I'm just told to show up. Just do as you're told, right?
Yep.
That's right. Okay. So let's, if the board's ready, if I could get a motion to approve that application. application, including the deadline.
They must approve the vacancy application including the deadline of the seventh at four P M, I believe, was this? Yep.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second on that item. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item three, considering early graduation request for Xander Ditzworth.
Yep, so Xander's application there, signed off by Mr. Engelman, Mrs. Harmon, for early graduation at the end of the semester in December.
Motion to approve that, you ready? So.
Second.
A motion in second to approve the early graduation request for Xander Ditzworth. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item four, let's go with A and B, consider out-of-state field trip requests for the math and science trip to Houston, Texas, and the band and choir trip to Orlando, Florida.
So I've given you kind of the preliminary details in my memo, both Mr. Wright is here to answer any questions that you might have about the NASA space settlement competition, and then Mr. Langholtz here to answer any questions the board might have in regards to the Disney World trip for band and choir.
So who gets to go to the NASA? How are those kids, do they, is it open to anybody or certain?
Yeah, and we have an application process, and we talk with, both Mr. Allen and I have it on our boards, and they come get an application, they get to fill out math and science classes they've taken, why they want to do it, and then there's a essay that they have to write as to why they feel they'd be a good candidate for this. And when we go through them, then, yeah, right now, we have six. We think very, very good candidates to go, and we've been approved up to eight by the A A, because we haven't had, we haven't gotten to go for three years, so.
How often do you usually go every?
Usually it's every year.
Every year?
But three years ago, we had early prom, and the NASA trip got pushed late, and they were the same weekend, and the last two years have been COVID, so, yeah, we're, we're excited to go back.
Yeah, so they travel as a group of not only Northwest Iowa, but Nebraska and South Dakota, about a hundred and fifty kids, and then, or excuse me, a hundred and thirty-five kids and fifteen chaperones, so.
What grades are eligible, Chris?
Um, high school is the level we do it. Usually they recommend at least sophomore through senior, just because of the demand of what's expected of them down there. They, they really push them hard. So just from a maturity standpoint, it's, it's better. I think right now, all of ours that we have going are juniors and seniors, but.
So for kids that have gone in the past, do they usually just go once in their high school, or do some of them go?
We've, we've had students go multiple times. It sometimes depends on yearly basis and how many applications we get. If, we try to make sure we give as many kids the opportunity to go down. So we've told kids, you've already gone, if we have enough, we're going to go that route. But we've had multiple students that have gone two years, and that second year, they know what to expect, and it's actually nice taking them that second year because they, they do so much better during the competition. The first year is a little overwhelming, but, so.
It's going to be new for anybody this time.
This time it's new for all of them.
Yep.
Mr. Langholt, any, you know, this is a once every four-year experience for band and choir members.
Yes.
Again, not required, but optional.
Yep, it's, we usually put out information the, the summer before to try to get parents prepped a little bit, but yes, this has been ongoing since long before I came to Central Lion. Tom Gasper was one who started this, and it's been going on every four years ever since, so, and my wife and I have continued it since, since we've been here. So this would be our fifth, fifth trip since I've been at Central Lion, so. Good experience for the kids. It's, it's fun, but it's, it's also the performance opportunities are, are unique. We even, we marched in the Magic Kingdom, the, the Disney people told us we'd probably be performing for twenty-five thousand people from around the world, so it's, it's a unique experience.
Right now, you're planning on eighty-eight?
We've got eighty-eight right now that have indicated that they would, would like to go, so.
Ten chaperones, and those have kind of already been identified as well, and similar type of ratio than to what we're taking as well for a NASA trip. Sure, about what percentage of the total kids is that, eighty-eight?
I think we have ninety-eight possibility, so it's about ninety percent, I guess, roughly.
You have any questions on those? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those requests.
I will make a motion to approve that as a field trip request.
A motion in second to approve the out-of-state field trip requests as listed. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. Item five, consider audit proposals.
Yes, so I've forwarded both of those proposals on Friday, or Jackie did on my behalf. And I let the board know that in our, kind of our first round, you know, we put our request for proposal due, and our due date came and went without any submissions. And so Jackie and I both reached out, and we were able to convince two firms to submit their proposals. The dollar numbers are slightly different between the two, but I think by the time the single audit happens again next year, because we're going to have a similar type of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, over that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold for meals for all students, and then the ESER dollars again this year, and then the preparation of our financial statements, it's going to be probably between thirty-five and forty thousand dollars. So even though their flat fees are in the twenty thousand dollar range, by the time you add in the single audits, you add in the hourly rates in preparation of those financial statements, I think the dollar number's really the same. And so really, for us, what it came down to is the references, as we called the other schools that had those two firms, and that's where the recommendation comes from. The recommendation is to go with King.
Reince, Crosser and Company.
And that's, they have half the SULAN conference. All of their references were Iowa schools. Nothing against the other firm, but their only Iowa school that they provided for a reference was West Lyon. They had a couple Minnesota schools in there for references. And again, Sean Kremen and Janet Feinkum out over at West Lyon had good things to say, but I just think the, the total number of those from the other firm are really what is the foundation for our recommendation.
One of the things that stood out to me, too, is the other firm is intended to do all of it remotely. There will be no onsite visit.
Which one? I Bailey?
Yes.
Uh, they would come for some field work in October, have been minimal, but yes.
I didn't see that.
Mm-hmm.
For the most part, I, I, what I read is it sounded like it was all remote, but I can't imagine they can't come here for some.
And that's how I do it right now. I do almost all of it virtually and then two days in field. So I would hope that that's what, at least that's what I read, but maybe I misinterpreted.
That's why I misinterpreted also, but.
Yep. It was a little later, which is what I didn't like. King would be earlier, they've got us on their schedule a little bit earlier, whereas I Bailey was after the reports are due, so that was a red, not red flag, but a concern for me.
Sure.
Especially in starting over, you know, this is all I've known for eighteen years, and now we're starting over with a, a new firm, and from what we got from every firm is everyone's short-staffed and schedules are tight, so that's the reason for lack of proposals.
Did Grant Williams not?
Nope, they declined. She is, again, short-staffed, lack of time, she's nearing retirement, kind of a combination. That was the common theme, not, not the retirement necessarily, but the common theme of just, as with everyone, there's just not enough staff. And a lot of accounting firms just don't do school audits either. Our local firms are not, did not submit a proposal.
Grant Williamson told us a while ago, though, they weren't going to be able to do it, right?
She kind of indicated.
She's indicated, but she didn't give me a straight-out answer.
Okay.
Yep, you know, last time she submitted her, her proposal was one of two that submitted to us, so.
She mentioned that on her call that we had last week, probably. The reasons why, as Jackie said, the short staff, she's getting to a point where, you know, she's close to retirement.
Personal reasons, she has a grand baby coming, you know, and just all those things at all of us.
She wants to, yeah, she just wants to step away from, I believe, so. Nothing personal against our school by any means, but.
Sure.
I don't, they won't have any school audits going forward. I think we were the last one.
She just.
That seems planted a while ago, I think. I seem to recall that we.
We have to remember that she took the audit from a local firm. It, it followed her, and then I think it was a good working relationship, and she had us and two other schools in the area because of that. And then she stopped doing one who are southeast, southwest, and then stopped doing the one to the east, I thought, I said, maybe three or four years ago, until we were the last of the, the audits left, so.
So the King group, is that a Sioux City?
Yep. Yep.
And that would be in September, is what I think?
It was a timeline of July through September with the same sort of timeline that we've been used to, with a report, then meeting with the board like we did, and then a final approval. And it'll, again, all depend on a single audit and hopefully staffing, that that's what follows through. That's how, what I would prefer, simply because those annual reports are due September fifteenth, it's nice to make sure all of your books are in order before you hit submit, because otherwise you're fixing it in the next year, and that's just.
Cumbersome.
Cumbersome, not good practice. I'm hoping that the first year won't involve a lot of extra hours to get to know our district and things, but that's a possibility to.
Are either one quite a bit higher than what we are currently, or are they in mine with like?
With the single audit especially, yeah. Like he said, I think we'll be right in, anywhere between that thirty and forty thousand dollar range. That's right where we're at with, with Grant Williams as well, especially with the single audit.
With the single audit, we're at about thirty-five thousand dollars right now with Grant and Williams.
And that's kind of what he and I, when we were doing this in both math, that's where we think we'll be as well.
It just sucks that it has to come from our general fund, but it's the reality.
I was just happy that two actually responded.
Yeah.
And we.
I didn't want to have to call the state.
Is this a multi-year?
It is for the, only the three years, because that's what we asked for. I would like to, once it's approved and we get into a working, working relationship with them, instead of going out for a three-year bid, just ask to each year extend that or extend it indefinitely until either party wants to be done because of these issues. Other schools are, are doing that now, just because there's just not enough audit firms out there. You, I think we have to give them at least a commitment beyond that three years, but we need to get into the relationship first and make sure that it's what we desire to and what they desire. But yes, for the initial three years.
There's no more questions on that? Entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the audit proposal from King Reince as suggested, recommended by our administration.
Second.
A motion in second to approve the audit proposal as recommended. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item six. Each of these individually?
Individually, and they do require that now, an individual motion approval, and as it is stated, I obviously typed it out for you, so if you tell it, it's not a big deal. But as you can see before, you have a modified supplemental application to the SVR C, the School Budget Review Committee, for seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars for increased enrollment. That is good, obviously, so that's just students we hadn't planned on. And then we did not have any modified allowable growth requests for students not on last year's open enrollment list, so it's an automatic application that we fill out. And the next one is the modified supplemental amount for providing English Language Learner Program for students who exceeded five years of weighted funding. We do have students that that applies to, so that gives us four thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and one cent. And then the next amount, we'll just kind of cover them all before you make the motions, is maximum modified allowable growth and supplement to aid in the amount of fifty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ten cents for excess limited English proficient allowable costs. And what that is, is our E L L, E S L program. We've overspent our program for our students. That's a combination of staff benefits, supplies, summer school, all of those things over the course of the year. And they will give us the modified allowable growth back for our expenditures, so authority.
Authority, so this just gives us.
Just, all of this is only spending authority, correct. What I usually do in our budget, if you'll remember, I usually take all of these amounts, and that's kind of how I come up with our cash reserve levy, and then increase it from there, but it's kind of a basis for that, to recoup those costs in cash and authority. But yes, unfortunately, or fortunately, I do use that motion for each of those.
Okay.
You could just say one, two, and three, and I, it's all written there. It's public knowledge.
When you're ready. I'll make a motion to approve number six.
Second.
A motion in second to approve number six. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
I'll make a motion to approve number seven.
Second. A motion in second to approve number seven as described. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve number eight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item number eight. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Wonderfully done.
There you go.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Item number nine, consider policy review, Mr. Thorpe.
Yeah, so page forty-one has the summary of, of the policies. We're working our way through the two hundred series. A couple of these, we actually approved at last month's meeting because they were part of the quarter one policy review over the summer. But you'll note then, should be quarter two policy review includes the one hundred, four hundred, and five hundred, and six hundred kind of updates. And then recommending to rescind two oh five point one and two oh five point two on emergency closings, and then three oh seven on communication channels. Those three don't align with ISB sample policy going forward, and specifically with the closings, we address those in our handbook, and kind of redundant because they're also in the seven hundred series, seven eleven point eight. And then the three hundred series, we've adopted two thirteen, four oh one, and five oh two to try to kind of clear up that chain of command, public complaints, even student complaints or student grievances. So the three oh seven is really redundant, and so try to eliminate those redundancies, those are addressed in those other policies. So that's the reason for the rescinding of those three. The other review, again, minor edits. The other review, again, minor edits, just really shells to mazes and a couple of is's in those, here's in there.
Any questions, discussion on those? You're recommending waiving the second reading?
Correct.
One of the questions I have is just on policies in general, so I know Amanda kind of goes through the primaries, et cetera. Who takes them from the PDFs that get approved at our meetings and gets them up to the website?
Amanda.
Amanda, okay. Can you have, after we go through this, assuming these pass through, can you have her do just a quick check to make sure we're all at the speed there?
Yep.
Do we need to go through and do a check to make sure that we've approved everything within the last five years?
That's the rotation we're on, yeah, so.
That's my thought.
Yep, so there, we should be good, because that calendar that we revised, actually when we started this two years ago, when I started, is kind of created that rotation so we get everything. And that's why we started including even the quarterly updates in our kind of real time, because the past practice had been to wait until that whole 200 series or 300 series came up and then so some of those were dated and hard to kind of really catch up.
So are we playing catch-up a little bit? Like will we, are we, I mean, it seems like we have a lot of these policy reviews. Will it, or is it just?
It's just gonna, this is just gonna be the practice going forward, yep. So we're, instead of the policy committee reviewing an entire 200 series in one meeting and bringing that into the entire board, just trying to bring the policy in front of everybody bit by bit, so we're kind of all familiar with the policy. And then when we need to refer to it, like vacancies, it's right here.
Or meals.
Or meals for.
Travel.
Travel expenses, yeah. So this is just gonna, again, hopefully be our policy going forward, so everybody's aware.
Okay. No more questions, I'll entertain a motion when you're ready.
You want one motion to both approve the A and rescind B?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the policies as listed in section A and waive the second reading and approve the rescinding of policies in section B. So I suppose we have to waive the second reading of the rescinding of those also?
Yep.
Okay.
A motion in second as described. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 10, we'll take the resignation and the hirings together.
You bet. So again, in your packet, we've got Mr. Lutmer's resignation as assistant baseball coach and then recommendations from Mr. Harmon for our three staff members involved in the after-school program. Mr. Engelmann's got a recommendation in there for Sherry Ladd as a secondary learner assistant, since we, at last month, approved the resignation of Lynn Wessels. And then Ethany Poulsher for middle school track, Jared DeBay as assistant softball coach in County Janzma, also as assistant softball coach from Dan Cruz.
What do we have, open man, a couple assistant?
Baseball. Those would be the only coaching positions that we currently have available. And then we're always looking for bus drivers, route drivers or activity drivers. And then Mr. Engelmann is the NHS advisor. But as far as speech, we're, we're good.
That's, just the one tonight should be our only extra duty that is really necessary and then obviously NHS, like I said, but yes, bus drivers would be more than welcome.
So schedule for filling the baseball positions?
We posted internally, so now we're gonna start running ads and like the Northwest Hour Review, reaching out to our local colleges for any graduates or any baseball players that are looking to stay involved in, in coaching over the summer. So, you know, hopefully we can identify somebody, as soon as we're able to find a quality candidate, we'll break, break the nation to the board.
When you're ready?
Make a motion to approve the resignation and hirings as listed.
Second. A motion in second to approve the resignations and hirings as listed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item J, announcements, dates to remember.
Yeah, so our fall activities have concluded, really the, the fine arts concerts this week with here onsite, sixth through eighth grade band and choir tomorrow evening. And then basketball, girls' basketball gets started on Tuesday, the 23rd. And then I will tell you now, Tuesday's November 30th game with West Lion will just be a girls' basketball games, since West Lion will be playing in the championship football game this weekend, so that's an update. Otherwise, you know, winter, winter has come, so all those activities are really getting going now. Our first home wrestling meet will be on Thursday, the 2nd. And then we've got the first third and fifth grade winter concerts on the 7th. And then really our first home girl-boy basketball game, doubleheader, will be on Saturday, the 11th, so.
Is the Friday, December 3rd game going to be at Boyton Hall?
So I.
Is that one canceled?
It might be for boys. We'll definitely play the girls. Just, again, be flexible and work with, with Boyton Hall if they want to move that, that third game. I think they're really trying to find a date right now, they just haven't yet.
True.
So, and then what we do need to discuss is, do we want to keep the meeting on Monday, the 13th at 7 o'clock? Do we want to move it up? Do we want to look at moving it to a different date? We're gonna have basketball games on the 14th.
13th, 14th, or 14th, 13th, what we talked about, 14th against the games, 16th as a wrestling meet and a junior high boys.
We definitely need to have, if we're, again, my thought is we need to, we need to, at our next regular meeting, we would appoint the new board member, and that needs to be done by the 15th. So if you wanted to move it to a night where there's no school activities, you could move it to the 15th, appoint the board member at that meeting and still meet all of our statutory timelines.
Or you could have it earlier on the 13th, that affects people's work schedules.
Yep.
Are we, if we go to the 15th, are we right on the button?
You're right on day 30.
Okay.
Counting tomorrow as day 1 on that calendar.
So looking at the agenda for last December, obviously we have to add in the appointment of the new board member, but it was pretty small.
There isn't a lot in December.
Three items. But the one thing I don't want to be rushed on is your mid-year review.
Right, sure.
I would be, I've got the seventh grade boys' basketball and the high school winter concert, so earliest I could probably get here is 5:20, 5:30? And then obviously I'd be here for the, the concert could just go right over there, is two hours enough? I don't know, I just don't want to be pressed for time. What's going on Tuesday night? Basketball?
There's, there's JV, JV, JV and varsity, varsity.
Here or where?
Here. Here versus Okoboji.
Okay.
So you could do an early, but I don't know who that affects as far as, I know Carrie's got girls.
You got both levels.
Yeah, I would only, I would prefer not to be here past 6:00 because now I also have a varsity player. Not that, you know, people can, can miss, but as you just said, you know, this is a mid-year review and other than you're appointing someone, so then you're looking at Wednesday, which is what about church night, although that affects our students more than it affects a lot of our adults, I don't know who volunteers on those church nights, so. Or I should say, family night.
Family night, excuse me.
Well, that's kind of it. Wednesday looks fine for me.
Yeah, I find it, what about the previous week? Is that even an option?
Then, then you're not getting your appointment information in time, though.
We can move the application.
We could move the application up if that's the only option.
Yeah, the Wednesday before would not work for me, I know that.
And the only thing I'd be cautious of there is you have a holiday in there, that's next week already, you know? I, I don't know if you want to rush that too much, but you also don't want to have people hanging out there for too long.
Yeah, I think I can do it with the 15th.
Do we want to go earlier?
About like a 5:00? That way if you do have family night activities to go to, you can still go to those.
What time can you get here? I can make that work from 5:00. You okay at 5:00?
Yes.
You too?
Okay, let's set the next regular board meeting for Wednesday, December 15th at 5:00 PM.
I think that would really happen in that date, but.
It's okay, though. One of the things I always say is you, if you give people too long, then they put it off and then it doesn't get done either, so at least that's a, a lot of things to do.
Let's certainly keep an eye on the weather.
Yep.
Because that, that's a hard deadline for us.
It's a hard deadline.
It's the 15th, so we'll get a snowplow and we'll come get everybody.
Okay, so, so worst comes to worst, can we do it completely remote?
We can. Yep. So clambeath will be.
I think we can get Carrie here for sure.
Teams.
Mr. George and I can get here, it'd be the three of you that name, well, you're here locally most of the time too, aren't you?
You sleep in my office or what?
Yeah. Two miles out of town, you can get here.
Okay.
But yes, snowplows.
Okay, that's good.
Make a motion for Jared?
Second. Motion in second to Jared, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jared.
Two years ago and last week, Jared's gone.
That's crazy.
Just adjourned at the exact same time for the past three years. That's kind of crazy.
Hour and 44 minutes, that's a good meeting.
Okay, four of you splitting some bills.
Each one of them? You? You're not done yet. Preparing for the paper, but that's.